The land on here, what are they gonna talk about?
Um, yeah. See you next time, huh?
Hey, they trying to get us set up. They trying to get us set up to let people in the land like they were doing before.
Can you read my writing?
Yeah, get ready, get ready.
Yeah, exactly, very good. And the other one is.
I'd like to call the Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting to Order, Windsboro, South Carolina, Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at six o'clock P. M. Can we get approval of the agenda?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Set the record show seven zero. Approval of the agenda. We have invocation by Councilman Rosebar.
Bow ahead. Heavenly Father, we come today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your love, your grace, Lord, as we make decision that will affect the citizens of this county. We ask these blessings in your son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Okay, item four, approval of the minutes, can we get a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Set the record show seven zero. Public presentation, Dr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. This is a proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month. It reads as follows, whereas March Women's History Month, every March Women's History Month provides an opportunity to honor the generations of trailblazing women and girls who have built our nation, shaped our progress, and strengthened our character as a people. This year's theme, Women Providing Healing Promoting Health, is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic, and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. Throughout our history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women have strived and sacrificed for equity and equality in communities across the country. Standing on the shoulders of the heroines who came before them, today's women and girls continue to carry forward the mission of ensuring our daughters have the same opportunities as our sons. Fairfield County is pleased to recognize some of our very own prominent women, such as Mamie Peanut Johnson, one of three women to play in the Negro League, and the only woman to take the mound as a pitcher. Miriam Jacqueline Stevenson was a television host, actress, and former model. She was crowned Miss South Carolina in nineteen fifty-three, Miss South Carolina, U. S. A. in nineteen fifty-four, Miss U. S. A. in nineteen fifty-four, and the first American to win the title, Miss Universe, in nineteen fifty-four. These are but a few of the great women who have had a profound effect in Fairfield County and on our society as a whole. As we reflect on the achievements of women and girls across the centuries and pay tribute to the pioneers who paved the way, let us recommit to the fight and help realize the deeply American vision of a more equal society where every person has an opportunity to pursue the American dream. In doing so, we will advance economic growth, our health and safety, and the security of our nation and the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the people of Fairfield County do hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-two as Women's History Month, and encourage all to observe and participate in appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Um, thank you, um, can we get a motion to approve?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye? Posers nay? Set the record show seven zero. We're now down to first public comment, Dr. Robbins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, two persons signed up to speak, first person, Thomas Armstrong.
Good evening, Thomas Armstrong. Um, my, my question or concern is public comment, as it is outlined on the agenda. In the terms of public comment, I have a, a question or a statement, or maybe even a request. Um, in the absence of the attorney, typically he's here on these meetings, but it has came up several times throughout the public that the settlement from Dominion, uh, from the Dominion, the ninety-nine point five million dollars, seems to be some confusion whether or not this is public funds or not. And I was hoping that maybe someone could clarify this, because I'm, I'm the belief that if money comes into the county by way of county funds or anything that's granted to the county, then become public funds. Do anyone care to correct me if I'm wrong? Okay, thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One, again. My, my thoughts are on the, it's good to see that you're already moving and thinking ahead on the budget and the budget calendar. And I think some of the things that we need to incorporate at this point is on the calendar, so we plan it out. Everybody, everybody is helped, and we're fully transparent, are the budget forms and the budget reporting online in the county webpage. And specifically, I'm talking about what we missed this last year was a budget worksheet and budget summary reports. These are vital reports, documents that tell citizens and councilmen alike where we are going and why we were going and what we need to do. And, and it is it, it's also important, because the one report reflects the people that have the initial input on the, in the budget format, it reflects their ideas and whys and explanations. And it really helps to know why we're budgeting a certain amount, and it really helps to know if we really need it, or do we need more? But the explanations go a long way in informing the county and keeping us transparent. The other issue I would, I would like to see is on, on the calendar, a focus on, instead of comparing the budget this June to last June, comparing the budget to what we actually spent and what we actually, what revenue we actually got the previous year. And that should be on the calendar, and of course, you can tie that in with the audit release. But by looking at what we actually spent, by looking at what we, the revenue was last year, we can say what went wrong, what went right, and what we can do to improve. Those are much better guidelines than the budget of last year just itself. Putting that on the calendar will help ensure that we do make that comparison, and it's a much better guide than we've had in the past. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. We're down, we're now down to public hearing. Item seven, public hearing, it is, it is now six oh eight. Public hearing, ordinance to appropriate an amount not to exceed one million dollars from the general fund to be used to pay the expenses relating to the relocation of the county government offices into the new county administration building, and relating to the relocation of the Sheriff's Department into the new county administration building to include furnishings, fixtures, equipment, and moving costs. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Randy Bright.
This is, this proposal doesn't give us the needed goals and intentions so that we can provide follow-up and reach those goals and intentions. The ultimate goal is to obviously properly move all of our fixtures and, and get it in line. But I, I, I wonder how we wound up with this up to a million? And how are we going to hold our various private vendors and our various departments to any kind of goals if we have an up to figure? That's like, you know, going to a reg, cash register, and you have some merchandise, well, charge me up to a hundred dollars. Well, what's gonna happen? You're gonna get charged a hundred dollars anywhere you go. Whenever you have a lucian number like that, that you can't track, then you're gonna get burnt. And that's just human nature and human history. You're gonna pass it anyway, but you still have time to have more specific goals. Is there, is there an orderly plan for the entire movement? Do we, do, has all the departments put their plans in place? And have we gotten bids, or at least measured what it will cost to do all this merchant, merchandise, and fixtures, and structure, and people move? Um, I, I, that, that is a, a concern that without a roadmap for fi, both financial success, financial prudence, and completion of the project, it will not get completed as well as it should. And you will not be able to track it, you and the administrative team will not be able to track it unless there are specific deadlines and goals. And I know, like, Mr. Bell, you had mentioned before, you're, you're, um, certified in Six Sigma, black belt in Six Sigma, and apply those Six Sigma rules to this project. Set goals so that you could, and have a tracking mechanism so that you can go, uh, complete those goals in a successful manner. Uh, but we can't just kind of put the ship out there, both from a financial standpoint and from an operational standpoint, and, and let it go without giving it some sort of direction, and without giving it a lot of direction, when we're gonna spend up to a million dollars. We've got a lot of accounting and a, and a lot of accountability here, and we can't enforce accountability unless we have specific goals and specific plans. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Um, thank you. We're down, we're now down to item eight, ordinance resolution and orders. Okay, thank you. All right, we now, we wanna close out our public hearing, it is now six twelve P. M. Thank you. We're now down to item eight, ordinance resolution and orders. Item A, first reading by title only. Orders number seven ninety, and orders to name the Fairfield County Detention Center after deceased former Sheriff Herman Young, who served Fairfield County as sheriff for twenty-two years, was named Sheriff of the Year in nineteen ninety-six, served as the president of the Sheriff's Association from twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve, and in twenty-fifteen was awarded the South Carolina Order of the Palmetto, the state highest award for his fifty-two years of service in law enforcement. Can we get a motion to approve?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second, since there's, since it's by title only, no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Set the record show seven zero. Item B, first reading by title only. Ordinance number seven ninety-one, and orders to approve the sale of a certain part of land owned by Fairfield County, which is a vacant lot that is approximately point one nine acres, located at one twenty-eight Sixth Street in the Mills District of Windsboro, tax map number one forty-five dash zero two, dash zero two, dash zero one two, dash zero zero zero, to a private citizen whose property is continuous with the, with the office property. Can we get a motion to approve?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's been moved, did we get a second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Set the record show seven zero. Um, we're down now to, um, third and final reading, orders number seven eighty-nine. An order is to appropriate an amount not to exceed one million dollars from the general fund to be used to pay the expenses relating to relocation of the county government offices into the new county administration building, and relating to the relocation of the Sheriff's Department into the new county administration building to include furnishings, fixtures, equipment, and moving costs.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, before we vote, Mr. Whitaker, would you give us a broad description of what this money is used for? And maybe a time schedule and everything as related to, um, um, Mount Zion? Um, and, and let me say, not, um, let me make sure, and I, I accidentally said the name just so everyone will know going forward, that the building will no more be called Mount Zion, it's gonna be called the, um, um, the Fairfield Ga, Fairfield County Government Complex.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that, and that's, that is his name, and so it won't be called that anymore. And so again, um, please give us a description and then the timeline.
Can we minimize? So, I know, no, but let's just keep it big so people can actually see it. Well, good evening, I wanna, um, read a little narrative and then share basically um, some of the project issues that, um, we found with the Fairfield County Government Complex, um, and then talk about, um, how we're gonna use this money, um, effectively to, to meet the goals that we, we want for, for moving into our new government complex. Um, and this is just some analysis, some lessons learned. The redevelopment of the Mount Zion Institute School into the new Fairfield County Government Complex is a very complex capital project, in both how it was financially structured and in the complexities of converting a very old building into a functioning, modern, multipurpose facility while maintaining the historical characteristics of the property. Let us not forget that the former school buildings were in the, were up for demolition in two thousand and six because it had been long abandoned, neglected, and blight, not only on the surrounding neighborhood, but on our entire community. The cost challenges and talented, and talents associated with turning something in that condition into a government office and complex are many. This property went from a facility designed to be a school to offices and meeting spaces to serve all the citizens of Fairfield County. Repurposing buildings that were built in the nineteen thirties as a primary school for students into a twenty-first century government office complex that meets the needs of an emerging local government and houses administration staff, sheriff office staff, county council and county council staff, nine-one-one emergency staff, recreation staff, after-school programs, gymnasium, exhibit hall, and many other uses in a co, is, and many other uses is a complex capital project that requires a highly skilled and talented project management and financial expertise. The team assembled to assist us to the concluding portion of this project will transition us from a development and construction to operations utilizing our own resources. The original fund, one million held in escrow, were allocated for repurposing the project above and beyond the original scope of work envisioned to improve the physical conditions of the government complex office. Most notable, most notably was the relocation of the nine-one-one, um, operation. Omitted, but certainly necessary to our operations were costs related to information technology. Omitted, but certainly necessary to our operations were costs related to information technology and audiovisual needs. Two lease payments totaling one hundred thousand dollars were also made from these funds. However, getting the buildings ready with adequate parking was only one half of the equation. There were no funds allocated to the second part of the project, which is moving into the facility in a way that takes into account all the requirements needed to house and operate a government office complex. We shared those needs with you previously for full disclosure and transparency. The additional resources are absolutely necessary to complete relocation into the redeveloped site. Needs identification, construction management, cost negotiation, change order request management, procurement management, and overall intentional project management are all moving us to completion of this project in a timely and cost-effective manner. We have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars on the back end of this project. Unfortunately, we could have, we could have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars on the front end if appropriate project management had been implemented at time, at that time. So I respectfully recommend and request your support for this third reading appropriation of resources to complete the Fairfield County Government Complex construction and relocation. What you have before you is just further analysis, and I think we passed all these out. Did we pass copies out to all the council?
I didn't get it.
We need to, okay.
Yeah, we, we probably. We received copies last time of, of the timeline and all.
Right. This is just an explanation of some of the key issues. You know, some of the change orders and what it, what it cost us. So these are documents that we'll pass out that kinda show what the, what the estimated cost of the items are, but also some of the key issues. So I don't wanna, questions, I don't wanna read this. It's unfair. Any discussion, and we can highlight a few. You guys, what you want.
And, and is question for council?
Well, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, can, can you list how many violations were found last week when the fire marshals did their inspection and how serious in nature they are? And how long it's gonna take to get it corrected?
Right, I can't list them, but I do, I can tell you that there were code violations found, several. And that our project management team is working to ensure that those code, let, let me, let me say this for the public record. We hired a, a, a firm that's on state contract after the resignation of our community development director to help us go from a temporary C O to a C O. And during that process, code violations were found, and they're in the process of remedying those code violations right now. Will, you wanna say anything else about that? Who's our project manager?
Yes. Paul's question.
You come to the mic.
Pardon me. Uh, to Mr. Paul's question, we did not really find any fire code violations per se. We found about five sprinkler heads that were determined to be too low, meaning they could be contacted and disabled. So that was really the only fire issue that we, that we had on the list to repair or fix. Most everything else was building code violations, ADA, handicap violations, like some handrails, things of that nature. And, um, I don't, we're still working through that with the, with the developers, the full list. The, the list shrunk greatly after our visit last week with KCI, who is the, the County Temporary Inspection Group. And the developers, the architect, and the con, uh, construction contractor, we were all there. And the, the list was reduced greatly after conversations from the historical standpoint of things that could not be done. And, and, and then, for example, the, um, the building, the, the teachage building that we had been calling a museum was built as an event center which has a limitation of occupancy. And so calling it a museum makes it a commercial property. And it was not built to be a commercial property. So once that was determined or, or recognized by the inspectors, basically that whole sheet on the tr, teachage kinda went away 'cause they were viewing it as a commercial property. It was, it was things of that nature.
But, but one of the things, um, and, and I think, Mr. Paul, that really asks a, a really legitimate question. And that is, 'cause, 'cause a lot of things we found, um, that the new firm found was things that the previous person did not find.
That is true.
Okay, and, and one of the things we have made sure that we've told everyone is, those building codes will be, um, uh-uh remedied. Okay, and we're gonna get that done, 'cause it gotta be done. Okay?
Yep.
I'm, I'm hearing though, like, over a hundred violations, is, is that?
Yes, it, it, it's on, it's by building, so it's hard to, I didn't add it up quickly. But one building was, was fifty-eight, and the other three buildings probably, it was probably close to a hundred, yes. It is not near a hundred now. It, it's, it's down greatly after our visits. And by the way, I gave input early to the contractor, 'cause I work with them on a daily basis, of things that the, the inspectors had found in their first walkthrough, not the second walkthrough, which is what the document came from, the second. And they had already fixed the majority of what I gave them. So they were moving quick to fix things silly thing, and I call them silly, simple things like when they repainted some walls, they got paint on a lot of sprinkler heads. And those had to be replaced. You can't clean them. You have to replace them. It's just things of that nature.
And, and, and to, to further answer Mr. Paul's question is, we, we have told Mr. Rory that these will be done, period.
Any other questions for details or anything like that?
For, for Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
Have, have we came up with an, what are we going to do with this building once we move out of it?
We, we have that on our project list, and we haven't met yet on that. But we are, we've, we're meeting, we're, we're, we understand that that is a huge issue and that we've gotta have an exit plan. And so we're, actually, it's on our project list. We're putting together a work group to work on how we, you know, to maintain the property, what are the, the financial implications, what are the insurance implications, so all that's under consideration.
One of my last questions, um, I think it was stated in previous council meetings that the sheriff's office had a concern about sex offenders coming to the property with you having a daycare. Has that been addressed so Fairfield County won't bear any liability for, for that to happen?
Mr. Ball, can you wanna address that?
He, I think.
With all due respect, if you would go ahead, and then, if there's a legal implication, I'll, I'll address the legal implication based on how he responds factually.
Okay.
So to respond to Mr. Paul's question, we did a, an, an additional security assessment of the facility. The original assessment that was done a year or more back by the past administration group that's no longer with the county. They really focused only on the sheriff's department on the bottom floor. They didn't focus on any other of the five, of the four buildings or any of the other floors of the administration building, the three floors of the administration building. So we did a full assessment and found, in order to make sure that the children were safe, the employees were safe, and that the sheriff's department could keep control over those, um, visitors, I'll call them, that there was need for some additional cameras, a need for, for some additional door security where you, you can only pass those doors with, with badges as an employee, or, or even further than that, if you're not a sheriff's department employee, you can't pass that door. So we made sure that there was gonna be proper fencing where the children would be playing. We made sure that there were doors that you could get out of the gymnasium where the kids would be playing, but you could not get into those doors unless you were a county employee. All of that is in the estimated cost, this, this up to a million dollars that has been talked about. Those, those costs to do that are included. An estimate is included in that to, to upgrade those doors beyond what has already been installed for the sheriff.
Thank you, but, but, but please note, um, everyone, a, and that is, based on a lot of the questions, you all see the fallacy of the contract that we, we talked about. Nothing in there about what we're gonna do with this building, but all of us know we gotta do something. Okay, um, the code violations, the, 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 all the work to get us there, that the contract itself, what we gotta do when we go into the building, all of that stuff. As you all have heard me say, it was the most disastrous contract ever employed by this county. However, that's the case. But what we have done to make this building so we can go into it and, and have it as our Fairfield County Government Complex is significant. All the work that went on to get us there, um, is what we had to do to get us there. And now we're there. And, um, and, and Mr. Whitaker, um, I, I just wanna make sure, and to, and to all of those, your team, to get us where we gotta be right now, I just wanna say thank you because, um, thi, this was a mess. It, it, it was, it was a mess. We wasn't for it, but, but, but the council, previous council voted for it. But now we gotta make sure we clean up what they done and try to get us over the hump. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, I, I, I don't disagree with you at all. But I think before we move out of this building, we need to have a plan in place. So this building won't become what Mountain Zion was to that community over there.
Okay, and again, um, Mr. Whitaker, i, i, is him and Ms. Williams already looking at what and how we can do that. We've also talked to some people, um, whether we can get somebody to buy the building, whether they can do it. Well, um, a, a lot of that conversation has been going on already. So, um, we understand the urgency of doing that. We're not ready to vote. All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay?
Nay.
Let the record show six, s, one, in favor of the one million dollars. Board and commission, item nine, board and commission minutes. Library board, um, August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, just received his information. Board and commission appointments, planning commission, Christie Moore, District Five. Is District Seven.
Can, can I say something about that?
Yes, sir.
Recently, Mr. William Peak was elected to the planning commission from District Five. Mr. Gilbert tried to locate someone from his district, could not locate anyone. He was made aware that Chrissy Moore from District Five was willing to serve and got in touch with Mr. Gilbert. And that's how Ms. Moore's name came from District Five to be on District Seven.
Okay, um, one of the things, um, so then, um, Mr. Gilbert, you couldn't find anyone from District Seven to serve?
I contacted several people and they.
Okay, a, and again, normally it, it's a courtesy of, of the person for the, for the vacant district to go ahead and appoint someone. Okay, Mr. Paul, you, you are okay with this appointment? I know you, I know you had some other people in your district wanting to be appointed too.
Yes, they did. And, uh, but since Mr. Gilbert has already got Mrs. Moore's application, I, I'm okay with, uh, moving Ms. Moore forward.
Okay. Someone make the motion.
A question.
Okay, let's, let's get a second.
Okay.
Okay, it's been second. Question, Ms. Green.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, um, that we're following the, the kind of recommendations that we have done in the past. And I guess the last time we talked about two people from one district, you know, being appointed, we kinda selected one. So, um, if, if Mr. Pauly okay with this appointment and, um, you know, feel that this is going to be, vote his representative as well, then, um, you know, I think it's, it's okay.
Well, I would agree that in the future, and, and I've always stated this, that anytime we have a board opening, that it should come from the district, and it needs to be represented by that district. I agree with you one hundred percent. Ms. Moore is actually gonna be representing Mr. Gilbert's district, even though she's from District Five. If he's okay with her representing his district as District Seven, then I'm okay with it.
I got a question. So, Mr. Gilbert, you're saying that out of the whole District Seven, you couldn't find anybody? How many people did you ask?
Asked about five people.
Oh. You say you asked about five people?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, that's the district that I was born and raised in. And it's kinda hard to believe that out of a whole district, you couldn't find anybody to serve on a.
Mr. Over.
Mr. Rose. From District Seven.
Uh, do you know the names of everybody in your district? And, you know. I may, I fail, I fail to, uh, well, I see your point, but then I fail to see your point. I mean, you're just trying to break up an argument over something.
No.
Asked several people. And it was brought to my attention that this person wanted to do it. So I, they called me and I asked that their application be accepted, so.
Okay.
I'm not gonna argue about it.
No, it's, it's nothing to argue about.
Um, one, one, uh, this, this conversation, I believe, is very important to us going forward. 'Cause one of the things we have tried to do is make sure we give the appointments from the, um, from the district that's requesting it, we just give them current, common courtesy, and we all vote for it. That's how we've been doing, normally doing it in the past. But, um, the, one of the reasons we have, um, seven people is so that we can get people from all over the county to be on these boards. And that's why we have a, a, a board represented from each district. So again, we've got a motion to move in second.
So, so we don't have to go no further. I'm gonna make a motion to withdraw this appointment. It's, it's, is actually Mr. Gilbert's appointment from District Seven. But I'm gonna make a motion to withdraw it, um, that my representative from District Five is not on District Seven.
I second that.
Okay, so you need to make a, yeah, so you wanna amend the motion that was already made?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that motion need to be voted on first, the, um, is a redraw of the name. Um, Ms., okay, so it's been moved in second. Are you ready to, um, vote? All in favor of removing the name from the, from the appointment list?
Aye.
Um, um, opposers? Not, no opposers? So again, we go back to, so we can, so we, can we get a motion then, um, tonight then, not to appoint anyone to the, um, planning commission? For District Seven?
I make a motion not to appoint anyone to the planning commission for District Seven.
It's been moved in second? Any discussion?
Does the motion intend that the posit, that the position remain vacant for, or is it just for tonight?
Just for the night.
Okay, the motion should specify that.
Okay, so I repeat the motion. It's just, it's just that we don't want to appoint anyone tonight. Can we all agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposers nay? Thank you. We're down now to old business none, new business none, county administrator report.
All right, good evening. The first, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the first four items are Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Sineetha Williams, Deputy County Administrator. So first we'll start off with recognition of the Fairfield County Transit Department. Fairfield County Transit Department. Uh, Fairfield County Transit Department employees were honored at the Twenty Twenty-two Transportation Association of South Carolina training. We had Transit Operator, Mr. Charles Turner, received the S- Twenty Twenty-two SC DOT Operation of the Year for Fixed Route Service. Uh, Council Chair, Mr. Moses Bell, received the Twenty Twenty-two Rural Board Member of the Year recognition. Transit Operator, Mr. Colin Feaster, received second place in the van competition, and Transit Director, Ms. Diana P. White, was elected to the Twenty Twenty-two, Twenty Twenty-three Transportation Association of South Carolina Board of Directors. And they are all here tonight, and we congratulate you. Thank you so much for representing Fairfield County so well.
Um, but we need to, we need them to come up, we wanna make sure we get a picture of them if we can. Um, and, um, I think they brought their awards and, and that kinda stuff. I, I, I was thinking you was gonna have something on the tube. Okay, but one of the things, um, I had an opportunity while they're coming up.
Let me take a picture.
Okay, I, I'm coming, let me say this first, um, I had an opportunity to, to be with them, and Mr. Ms. Diana White, will you please come forward just a minute? I know you're on, I know you're gonna have some comments, but one of, one of the things is, I was, I was so impressed with the, um, the amount of respect that she got from our colleagues, okay? A- and, and her professionalism and the work that she did within the body itself to make sure everything was going along as it should have. And then to see these guys compete, okay, um, with, with, um, with a mindset to grow and developing, continues to get better, i- it was an awesome experience. And, and again, Tom, uh, um, at, I'm winning the, um, I guess the, the Board Person of the Year Award was just, um, I didn't know that, know where that came from, but, but again, thank you, 'cause I felt like I was undeserving, but again, um, um, i- i- it was, it was really significant. But I, I'll tell you what, this is our transit system, and, and all the work that they do, um, i- i- it is just significant, um, for this county to be recognized among all their peers and to receive the awards that they receive. I'll tell you what, um, I'm asking everyone just to give them a hand. I wanna make sure I whip my hat. That's right, you come on up here, what's wrong with you sitting back there? Yes, sir. I'll tell you what, um, thi- 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 this is, this is really good. Thank y'all for the work you do, and Ms. Diana, do you have anything you wanna say?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to be here.
Oh, one more?
Allowing us to be here this afternoon. It was a very experienced, um, training after coming back out of COVID. Phil, I'd like to say thank you. I hope that, um, we got what transit really does for us, and what the purpose of transit do for us. And, um, next year, you know, actually, come along with us, um, next time, because even though it say council, but...
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
The next time, and I also just like to say for us, sit down, that not only that Mr. Colen came in second place, um, the first place, um, van competition, um, young lady was disqualified, and she had a violation. So, Mr. Colen is the first place. Colen will be traveling to the national, which, um, is at CTAA, Transit of America, and he'll be going to, we'll be going to Kentucky, representing Fairfield County.
Um, but thank you, thank you for all the work you do.
All right, next, we just wanna make, uh, County Council aware that you're invited to the Twenty Twenty-two Veterans Expo this Saturday, March nineteenth, from ten AM until two PM at the Fairfield Recreation Center. Representatives from various county departments, church, and community organizations will be in attendance. So, that flyer is on the county's, uh, Facebook page as well, so we just wanted to officially let you all know and extend the invitation. There's a great list of vendors who'll be showing up there for the Veterans Expo. Next, we also wanna update you about the, um, Courthouse Security Committee. So, on May eighth, twenty nineteen, the Chief Justice of the South Carolina Supreme Court, Chief Justice Donald Beatty, ordered that each county shall continue to maintain a standing court security committee to address courthouse security concerns. The original order came in twenty twelve, this was an update in twenty nineteen, saying that each county shall continue to maintain this committee. Um, the Fairfield County Courthouse Security Committee met in twen- June twenty-eighth of twenty nineteen, and on July second of twenty nineteen. At those two meetings, there was no representative from county administration, but they did invite us to attend any future meetings. The committee is comprised of the Fairfield County Clerk of Court, representative from the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, the Chief Magis- Magistrate, Sixth Circuit Solicitor, Public Defender, Emergency Management, and Probate Court. The goal of the committee is to identify security concerns related to the court system. The committee already identified some needs at their first two meetings, which were presented to the previous administration. We have now received a copy of those previous needs. Uh, Mr. Whitaker and I will review those needs and their requests in the upcoming bu- budget process, and will present any, uh, recommendations to y'all during that upcoming budget process. But we just wanted to make you aware that the committee is very active, and that county administration will be working with the committee in the future. Uh, and then, we'll put up on the screen, we have the proposed Twenty Twenty-three Budget Calendar. All right.
And can you share a little bit about the...
Okay, he's... So, um, please note, once we get that up on the screen, and we'll also get the copy out to you, the dates and times for the upcoming meetings and the work sessions. Um, we've currently, there we go, all right, you can scroll down just a little bit. Thank you. We have currently had three budget prep meetings with the department heads, elected officials, and appointed officials. At each one of those meetings, we've gone over the anticipated revenues for the county, how we would like for them to tie any budget request to performance measures and any mandated requirements, and are also planning to develop a five-year capital improvement project list to assist with long-range planning and budgeting. So, we realize that this is a, um, a quick schedule, um, is due to the nature of, you know, the two administrators stopped getting here kind of late in the budget process in December and February. But by, of already talking to the department directors, department heads, and going over our expectations and how this budget process should work, and letting them see basically how much money will be coming in, and that we'll be making decisions based off of that, it has gone well so far. And we've already had some directors who've expressed, uh, pleasure in knowing that we're working on the five-year long-range planning list so that we can show council all of the county's needs, not just for this upcoming budget cycle, so that you can make decisions for what's gonna happen in the next three to five years as well, realizing that's a fluid document. So, we do plan, we had the last meeting today, uh, with the elected and appointed officials. The department deadline to have their budget proposals submitted to administration is this Friday, and then we'll be having meetings with the different departments to go over their budget requests, make sure they tie to performance measures, and that the budget that we present to you is a good working budget that's within projected revenues. Um, we would like to have the first reading by title only on Monday, April the eleventh, and have three work sessions, one on Monday, April eighteenth, with the Revenue and Budget Departments. On Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, a second work session where the agencies can come and give quick presentations about what they do with the funding that the county provides to them. And then a third work session, if needed, on Monday, May second, with any follow-up questions that you all may have related to the information presented to you, um, during those work sessions and the original budget submitted. The goal is to have the second reading and public hearing on Monday, May the ninth, with third and final reading on Monday, May twenty-third. And we've done that with the knowledge that if there's a reason to come back to do additional, uh, readings, we'll have time in June. We'll have two regularly scheduled council meetings in June, but if we need to have any additional work sessions, we'll have plenty of time to do that. Um, so, again, we, we do realize that, um, we're trying to give a little bit of time for us to do some work before you get that first reading. We don't wanna bring you an inflated budget with every request, we like to go through that with the directors to make sure we give you a good working budget to start with by the time, um, you first have it. But if there's any comments or discussion, please let us know.
Um, before you, are, are there, are there any questions from council on the schedule? It's a very aggressive schedule, but a full schedule, um, i- it gets out what we, we believe we need to do, but do you, do you all have any questions?
Well, I mean, stating that we just got this scheduled tonight, I mean, I guess we need to look and see if anything kinda...
Okay.
Conflicts with...
Okay.
Right.
Okay, all right.
That is fine, um, we'll definitely send it to you. We've, all the readings, first, second, third, are for regularly scheduled council meeting nights. The other ones are the in-between weeks, so we tried to do as much as we could on the nights that you all would naturally be here. But yes, if you go back, um, and look at this and have any conflicts, please let us know before we finalize it, and we'll be willing to do that.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
All right, I wanted to do, um, something that I think should become a regular feature of my, um, comments and as project updates. And so, we're, I'm gonna highlight two of our projects.
Thank you.
On day one, we were handed a list of fifty-seven transition items, most of which were capital projects in different stages of development and execution. Over the last, uh, few months, we have worked hard to understand the who, when, why, what, and how of the work going on to improve the county and meet county goals. We have whittled down that list to about eight pages and established weekly project meetings and regularly scheduled one-on-one meetings with staff and vendors working on projects for the county. Um, so we will period, pe- periodically update you on county projects, uh, capital and otherwise. We wanna start with an update on our latest assignment from, um, Councilman Gilbert, uh, which is, my understanding, a staff data collection project focused on understanding our staff morale issues. I wanna start off by thanking Mr. Gilbert for bringing this up and reassure him that as a veteran leader and a former quality improvement director, I fully understand the importance and the need to address employee morale as a function of organizational health. Our vision is that we will, uh, collect data to fully understand and address improvements to our organizational culture and health, and then develop and execute an action plan that could, could include training, coaching, and procedures that impo- that support good employee morale. And so, the update on the survey for employee morale. Ms. Williams and I met with the leadership from our Human Resources Department to discuss the possibility of an online survey. We currently do not have the funding to support hiring an outside consultant, but there are plenty of free and low-cost options to gauge employee morale. We are currently exploring the opportunity of using an online survey tool or distributing paper surveys to receive anonymous feedback from employees. We'll use the information gathered to identify areas for future training related to leadership, communication, effective working relationships, team building, and management. Efforts are already underway in this area. The Human Resources Department is bringing in First Sun EAP or Frontline Employee Training on April twenty-one, April twenty-first, on communications strategies for leaders. So, that's our latest project. Go ahead, Joe.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You say we, you say there's no funds to do an outsized source. How much would it cost to do through an outside agency?
We can get some quotes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you feel that...
Don't have it budgeted.
Doing it this way, that you would get a... That you would get a, a good feedback from the staff? You, you feel like that's fair?
When, so, I think the, the other option of anonymous, you know, like old-school anonymous survey, put and drop-off, you know, places...
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead.
Problem I have with that i- is the fact that you could do it anonymously.
Mm-huh.
But when you come down to, uh, whomever, uh, going over the, the survey, there could be things taken out that may affect certain issues.
Okay.
And my thing with going with an outside agency, that the staff will be more apt to, to, to wanna be a participant in it, they can do a study, then they can come back and give it to all of us at the same time. I think if we do it in-house, then there's, uh, there's always, uh, not saying that it, it, it...
Right.
But there's always that chance that something could be slid under the rug that needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
And I just feel like we need to find out exactly how much before, before we move forward.
Okay.
That we need to find out how much it would cost for an outside agency. I mean, we can come up with money for everything else, and I think that, that the welfare of our staff is very important.
Right.
And that we need to, to, to really take this thing serious and not just, you know, have, do, go ahead, half-half agree.
Yeah, you wanna say anything? Okay, we'll, we'll, um, research and bring you some cost estimates of having an outsized firm do an anonymous survey for staff service. Okay, any other concerns or questions about that project?
I, I don't have a question, I'd just like to make a comment. I know that, um, in some of my experiences, Mentimeter and other kinds of things have been used, you know, with the firm, basically, developing the questions that'll be asked and all of those things. And then, the, um, great thing about things like Mentimeter and things that are done online nowadays is that it will bring up, it will, uh, tabulate everything for you online, and it will list all of those, uh, issues that staff has in a priority order. In other words, if somebody mentioned that twice, it'll get a higher priority than someone who might, might have mentioned something once, so that basically you have all the priority orders, so, you know, um, I, I would say yes, affirm or whatever to come up with the questions, but, uh, online kind of, uh, staff surveys are, are quite, um...
My thing, you, you know, and I understand, second, I agree with you. My, my, my concern is that we don't want anything, we, we need a good survey from our staff. We, and I don't want anything to be swept under the rug that needs to be brought out. And if we do it as a staff, you know, i- if we do it in-house, then there's that possibility that, whoa, this may cause some issues in, in, in...
Okay.
Yeah, at no time did, did I mention, did I, uh, mention that. That was, I was much more mentioning the process than...
No, no, I just explained my concern, you know, my concern, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have, ready to report on that.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Who, um, di- di- did we vote on this about having the administrator go out, or, or can a council member just, just arbitrarily ask for the administrator to, to go spend money on issues?
I didn't ask him to spend money, I asked him to get a, uh, vote.
Let me just... I'll research it, we'll research it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, like I said, we'll, we'll come back with some information on, but what it is, and then you all can decide what to, okay? All right, the second update is on our, our parks and recreation. Well, we wanna talk about, um, uh, we understand the challenges to getting citizens to fully utilize the parks has been a challenge. We wanna just address that upfront, upfront. Um, but we understand that getting outside in the fresh air in the parks is good for citizens and the economic development of Fairfield County. Investments in improving, uh, communities' quality of life, uh, create a, a cycle of high-quality of life. Local, local attract, local locations attract workers, which attract employe- employers, which in turn attract even more investment in jobs. And then, high-quality parks and recreations can play a pivotal role in attracting and retaining quality businesses. Uh, we are very aware of why parks and recreation is an essential public service. Just as water, sewer, and public safety are considered essential, public services, parks are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in a community, ensuring the health of families and youth, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Um, parks and recreation programs provide an opportunity for families and neighbors to spend time together and build strong community bonds. Neighborhoods with parks in them tend to have higher property values and make areas a desirable place to live, work, play, and visit. So, for our update, Fairfield County currently has eighteen parks and recreation facilities, with two new facilities coming to the inventory, Ridgeway Community Center and Blacks, Black Stock Park. Ridgeway Community Center and Blacks, Black Stock Park. Um, these parks will require staff and support to be successful. It is obvious, uh, that supporting parks and recreation is an, is an important public service of our count, for our county council. And our goal is to identify ways to support and manage these parks in a sustainable and equitable way. Um, and then we just, um, I think this was a part of the employee survey, but nope. I think that's the end of that comment, uh, update on parks. Any questions about our parks? We, um, those are two major projects that we're working on right now. Go ahead.
Do, do you understand that we short-staffed now at the recreational center?
Um, we, um, you know, we, during the, the, um, the budget, um, kickoff, um, we, we, you know, and we've been talking to Mr., uh, Mr. Lucas about the, the short staff. And, and, and know that, that, that's going to be, you know, one of the things we're communicating in the meetings is for the expansion of services. Um, the, you know, when you talk about the, the building maintenance, uh, folks that we're going to the new government complex, is that the, the, those are, those are quality budget requests. We need the staff. We got new facilities. We're going to need staff to, to support those new facilities. So we, uh, we're aware of that.
Okay.
Okay. That's the end of.
Okay, um, um, thank you, um, County Administrator, thank you, um, Mr. Whitaker. Uh, we're down to quote the council report. Non-county council time.
Mr. Bell.
Yes, sir.
Saturday, uh, I got several things I need to say. On Saturday morning, I attended a mental health, mental illness and treatment seminar at Shallow Church put on by Love Never Fails Organization and Pastor Derek Hollins. It was a great event and just wanted to say that they do a great job for the community of Fairfield. The second thing I would like to say is in reference to what Mr. Armstrong stated. I've heard several statements made in the community that the projects being done in Fairfield County from the SCANA settlement is not taxpayer money. I would disagree and state that the money is to taxpayers of Fairfield County. The taxpayers are bearing the cost of the bonds and the increased utility rates. This is a settlement awarded to them. They receive little relief in the settlement. And the last thing I would say is, at the last council meeting, Ms. Green asked me, why come I contacted the audit firm to find out about the audit? I felt at the time that council was not being truthful. I was not getting any answers that the councils deserve. Since that date, a letter on November the nineteenth was sent to Mr. Moses Bell by the Comptroller of the State of South Carolina. He stated, get ready, it's time for the audit. That we will withhold funds if the audit is not complete. That you need to get, it would be prudent at this time for you to underscore to your finance director how critical it is for us to work as a team. That was on November nineteenth. Council never heard anything from November nineteenth. On January the fourth, a email from the comptroller stated that you're behind. That we're going to give you till January the twenty-first to get it done. We didn't hear anything on January the fourth. We didn't hear anything on January the twenty-first, and the council was not notified until the first week of February. That was the reason I called the audit firm. Thank you.
Let me go ahead and, um, I'm asking you a question before I get into my county council time too. Um, I, I received a letter dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, from the Office of the Controller General, indicating that there are several weeks left, but the Office of the Controller General had not received the audit information from the county. I notified Brad Calder of the letter received and asked, were there any issues preventing us from performing the audit on time? And several other questions, he assured me that they had hired the auditing firm, Elliot Davis, which was one of the questions. After assurance that it would be taken care of, and since it was a staff function to complete the audit and that the staff had been in place for many years, it was my belief that this would be accomplished as required. However, on January fourth, twenty twenty-two, I received an email stating the audit was not done as mandated, but they were giving us until January twenty-one to complete. At this time, Mr. Whitaker had assumed the role of county administrator. So I forwarded him and the finance director the email to get the audit done as required. I also sent him an email to inform me of the status. After getting his arms around, he discovered that the audit would not be done by January twenty-one, twenty-two as required. I asked him to send the information to council to inform them of these issues concerning the audit and the related information. This letter was given to the Voice newspaper after Mr. Whitaker sent it to by a member of council in an effort to discredit mainly the chair of council, not realizing two important factors. The council chair doesn't do the audit, and it would display the performance of our finance department leadership and have their performance placed on public view. This was a personnel issue, and I felt that it shouldn't be in the public. Any, anyone else have any other council time?
I'd just like to, to mention, I, I question calling, um, an auditor by a council person, and I will continue to question that. Uh, I have not seen anything from any financial person to, um, really challenge that statement. So I will simply say to the public again that it is not our role to call an auditor ever, that we're looking for an independent
Right.
evaluation of our finances. And, uh, yes, that should have been done through our administrator. We do have an administrator to do that. And a council person can sit down with administrator to make sure that all of those things are followed through. So, um, I'm just looking at governance and the way that, um, I think it should be done. Now, the second part, uh, for my thanking someone is certainly to Mr. Moss with the South Carolina Department of Transportation, because, uh, in the last two weeks, the, uh, Old River Road has been paved, and I am getting kudos from a lot of, uh, constituents that they're very happy that that's done now and finished. So, um, you know, certainly to Mr. Moss, and I will give him a call to thank him as well.
Any, any other one? Anyone else with a council time? Um, you know, we, 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 we've talked about, I guess we have probably run this, um, um, audit to ground and, um, talked about a lot of stuff. Everybody know that the council chair don't do the audit. That just some people make up, okay? But so, and I, and I got a long speech about that, but I've decided not to do that at this time. But I do want to talk about something else. Um, so with that, let me talk about the real news and opportunities. Um, I was very excited tonight to, um, join our transit personnel. Their conscious decision to seek opportunities for growth and develop greater capability for tomorrow challenges. Congratulations to all of you again. I enjoyed my time with you the other week. The last three weeks, we have been extremely busy working with national and state leaders, trying to forge partnerships to move this county forward. We believe today more than any time in Fairfield history, we will be able to build out the infrastructure throughout the county as it relates to rural water and broadband. We are initiating efforts to be shovel-ready. We have commitments that I'm asking you, the citizens, to help us in this effort. As an example, although he's not here tonight, Pastor Ted Belton was in a meeting with Senator Ten Scott's office for another meeting. Because he knew the direction of the county, he was able to discuss with them rural water, and now we have is also a scheduled follow-up meeting. Um, Mr. Whitaker talked tonight about parks, recreation, outdoor space, and its importance. We're doing a lot of work in this area and, and, and communities left behind without the normal taxpayers' dollars. Our hope is to do more as need and funding presents itself. In the next few weeks, we'll be working on the budget. The budget itself will prove to be very challenging. We have noted that we must begin with the end in mind to operate a budget based on the amount of revenues we receive. In the past, the county has used appropriation from the fund balance to balance the budget. For all realistic purposes, it has been depleted. As a side note though, Mr. Whitaker is working with the finance team to understand all pockets of available funding that are not currently utilized. The water refast station is gaining new life to erect that station, and our hope is that it will be in the proposed budget. If so, it'd be a good deal. Um, Ms. Green is working tirelessly to make that happen. Our plans are also to set aside ten thousand dollars for funding to develop plans for animal shelter. Again, I've attended the transportation conference, the South Carolina Association of, of, of Counties Conference, and the Rural Summit, all in the last three weeks. While it demanded a lot of time from me, the planning and contacts have already proven to be invaluable to the county. I will be sending forward a note asking the council members time availability for a retreat to discuss budgetary matters, ARP funding, development of community development block grants, and priorities and projects for the future as we look out years from now. We should not forget that the county lost twelve point five six percent population from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, indicating that the previous path could have been improved. As the poet Sterling Brown from Sumpton says, "The road you were traveling would not get you where you must go." I always ask from you, the citizens, to give us a chance to make the difference. I believe we on the way to an improved future. And now, on a personal note, I want to thank my family for being here tonight and always loving me. Sometimes we get on the phone, and before you know it, we all on the phone together, all of us. It was eleven of us, and I tell you what, there's still eight, I tell you. That's my heart. In the middle of all this noise, I tell you, mama would be proud. We can remember when mama used to have to wash our clothes at night just to make sure we had clean clothes to wear to school the next morning. Never sent us out the house dirty. And for you all being so supportive, I love you. Thank you. Next, can we get a motion to go in, into executive session?
No movement, Mr. Chair. I can.
Um, item A, um, the receipt of legal advice relating to the matter covered by the attorney-client privilege regarding sales of county real property pursuant to South Carolina Code. Um, is, is there anything else? If not all in favor, to go into executive session, that'd be known by I.
Aye.
Pose his name. Thank you.
Randy Bright. I, um, I wonder if he was there.
All right, thanks.
I had to get on my crew.
Fresh mouthfuls there.
It came from the council budget. Yeah. Well, it was allocated, I'm sorry, it was allocated from Mr. Bell's, but.
I answered this question.
Yes, sir.
The names of the folks that were in the picture out here. Lady in the black dress.
Diana White is the director. I don't have her name.
Diana White.
She's the director, um. I cannot, if somebody should have a help.
One in the black shirt did.
I'm not sure on that.
I'm not sure on that.
Yeah?
Okay, can we get a motion to come out of the executive session?
It's a move.
Okay, it's been moved that we cannot come out of the executive session. No action taken in executive session. It is now seven twenty-seven. Are you ready to vote? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Okay, we're now at the executive session. Do we have anything else before council?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn in a discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Now stand adjourned.